As we get to sort of real business, we'll bounce around in the agenda. So I'll call this meeting to order at 7:35 PM. This is the Wednesday, December 16th, meeting of Narberth Borough Council. Mr. Metric, could you call the role? I'm not sorry. Oh, my gosh.
I say, Mr. Metric is not-
Mr. West!
It's all-
Please call the role. Thank you.
Ms. Elshacks is actually just joining us, so they should-
Great.
Good. Fred Bush.
Here, Fred.
Mona Elshacks.
Here.
Rob McGreevy.
Here.
Michelle Pananopoulos.
Here.
Cindy Rickards.
Here.
Vice President Bob Weisbord.
Here.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch should be joining us shortly, and Council President Aaron Mudrick.
I am here. Thank you, Mr. West. I'm texting with the mayor. Right now. Okay. My comments are brief, which is wishing everybody the most joyful and happy holiday season that they can have in the borough, trapped in their homes, and wishing that the snow was a little fluffier and less icy, and we are all together in a three-quarter mile borough, even if we're all a little bit alone. So stay chipper, everybody. We're going to get through this. I'll come back to the mayor's report. Mr. Walco, could you join us into a public hearing?
Yes, at this time, we will start the public hearing on ordinance 1029, which is the amendment for the face covering ordinance. At this time, I have four exhibits. First is Board Exhibit One, which is the ordinance itself. Board Exhibit Two is legal notice for tonight's hearing. Board Exhibit Three is the proof of publication of this hearing in the Main Line Times on December 6, 2020. Board Exhibit Four is the proof of submission received by the Montgomery County Law Library, which was received on November 30, November 30, 2020. This is a simple amendment to the face covering ordinance that was passed at a recent meeting. We discussed it at the workshop meeting, and essentially, all it does is amend the provision regarding where face masks are required to state that previously, they were required still in boroughs owned in publicly accessible buildings, parks, playgrounds, fields, or open spaces, including Borough Hall and 80 Winter Avenue. We specified that we also include sidewalks and pathways adjoining those places. More importantly, based upon feedback that was received, there was an amendment made to say that if you can consistently maintain a 10-foot distance of all persons, then that does not apply. So that provides that 10 feet in the parks and playgrounds that you would not have to wear a mask. Is there any public comment? I've received no public comment from anyone who's contacted me pursuant to legal notice. I'm not sure if Mr. West has received any. Is there anybody today in the public that would like to comment on this ordinance amendment? Are you seeing no alternative? Counselors, counsel have any questions? With that, Mr. West, anything received from the public? But with that, I will close this public hearing on ordinance 1029, and this ordinance is now in a position to be voted upon by council at a later meeting tonight.
Thank you. All right, we have another hearing.
We'll turn into the second hearing on ordinance 1030, and this is the ordinance to provide for electric vehicle parking stations and charging stations throughout the borough. So this is a new ordinance amendment that creates a new article under our parking chapter, which again establishes the existence of electric vehicle charging stations and provides for definitions, signage, reservations, and fees for use of those stations. I will have four exhibits. The first one is the Board Exhibit One ordinance itself. Board Exhibit Two is legal notice. Board Exhibit Three is proof of publication in the Main Line Times for tonight's hearing, which was published on December 6, 2020. Board Exhibit Four is the proof of submission of this ordinance to the Montgomery County Law Library, which was received on November 30, 2020. This was something I believe was the infrastructure, I defer to Mr. Bush if he's here, was working on, and something that he's working on with the Borough Office to implement. Again, this is something new coming to the borough, and since we did not have anything in our code to address it in regards to the existence of it and how to how to provide for the charging fees for it, we needed to set that up. This ordinance does not include the enforcement mechanism at this time, as the borough is undergoing a more comprehensive parking study regarding those particular issues. But so maybe, I'm not sure if Mr. Bush has any other feedback to provide on this ordinance.
No, it's just that since we were installing these stations, we wanted to make sure we had the regulations in place to handle them.
And, Mr. West, do you know exactly where the planned stations would be or proposed at this time?
Yeah, currently, there are two proposed stations, one in the municipal parking lot behind Borough Hall next to the library, which this wouldn't apply to, but this would apply to the one on Forest Avenue. I'm sorry, on, yeah, Essex, there it is. Essex Avenue. Can't remember the name, the address of it. It's in front of the office building on the left-hand side going north, mid-block. Should be about two parking spots, mid-block on North Essex.
With that, I have not received any feedback from this ordinance, since my name and email is provided in publication as potential contact. Mr. West, has the office received any feedback from the public? Seeing none. Does the public here today have any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? Seeing none. Does counsel have any questions or comments regarding this ordinance?
So it doesn't actually apply to the parking spot that's in Borough Hall, or the station that's going to be put behind Borough Hall? I thought this was just going to apply to everything that we that we did from now on.
It should apply. I mean, it's, there isn't a need to regulate that as sort of right-of-way to have it, and I think that's what Mr. West was referring to, since it is borough property. However, you're right, if they're the setting up of the fees and the charging in the land to parking in that area, it would be covered in that way.
Okay, great. I think we're all clear then.
Hearing and seeing-
I just want to say, Rob, thank you for your stewardship, bringing this to the borough. I think it's a really great thing, and you just did a lot of work on this to make it happen. So, thank you.
And the way this is drafted and the way it came through, Rob and Fred, was a way that it could be built upon in the future as the infrastructure and the use continues to grow in the borough. So seeing no other comments or feedback, we will close the public hearing on ordinance 1030, and this ordinance is now in a position to be voted upon later tonight by council. And we'll turn back into the public meeting.
Aaron, you were muted there. Sorry.
I'm doing great tonight. We're going to the mayor's report, Agenda Item Four.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I had some technical issues coming on tonight. So, um, I, for the mayor's report, I've received the monthly police report from the chief for November, and that will be submitted as part of the packet for this evening's meeting. Um, next, as you may have noticed, we have a snow emergency going on right now in the borough. So if you are parked on a snow route, you should have already moved your car. If not, please move your car so that our plows can get through and clear our streets. Make sure they can. Also, under Borough Code 446, you need to clean your sidewalks within 24 hours of snow stopping falling. So please get out there quickly and clean the width of your sidewalk so that pedestrians can make it through. Also, if there's remelt and refreezing, you got to clear it again. Keep it clean and free of ice so people can safely get through the borough. Lastly, I just posted on social media, there is a new grant program for the restaurants in our borough, and if you need assistance due to some of the COVID restrictions that have been placed on restaurants, info details can be found on social media, on the Narberth webpage, on Facebook, and if you are not, if that's not accessible to you, please email me, and I will send you the link. And you can get up to $10,000 in funds for any restaurant or eatery in the borough, or frankly, in Montgomery County, to help you alleviate some of your expenses. So that is it.
Thank you. All right, now let's do the pledge of allegiance. Bob, can you do the honors of holding the flag? And Mona, could you lead us?
I pledge allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag.
-to the flag of the United States of America- and we are a republic-
Republic.
-which stands- one nation-
One nation.
-under God-
Under God.
indivisible- with liberty and-
Thank you. All right, now we go to public comment. Members of the public will do up to three minutes, and it will be, I'm going to try something a little new, which is a little less interactive than, and a little less informal than we've had it previously. So feel free to make your comments. We will be taking notes. If there are specific questions with factual answers, we will either get to them later in the meeting or follow up with an email to you. And with that said, who would like to go first? David Reed, you're the first one on my list. Do you have any public comment?
I'm sorry, and that's, Mr. Reed is here to talk to us tonight. He's the borough's Police Pension Fund actuary, so he'll be-
Yes, okay.
Sorry about that.
Just going through the list of all non-council members. Mr. Winston?
No comment.
Okay, and this is the order there on my screen. Cal Marie Scanlon?
Good evening, everybody. I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering, why does 201 Sabine Parking Lot have a private plowing company? Isn't that something the borough should do because it's a borough-owned property? I don't know if you knew that they have a private person over there. My second comment, I mentioned at the yesterday, that I'm curious why the lights on the basketball field are on when the basketball field is not used at night, and that's been something that's gone on for years, and it is something I've often wondered about. My next comment is Chief Gallagher put a police car down by the Essex Avenue side of 201 Sabine, or Sabine Avenue, to see if that would deter the one-way traffic. I'd like to tell you, it does not, because the problem with the one-way traffic on Sabine is not people breaking the law or going the wrong way on purpose. The majority of people, we had five people within an hour and a half on Sunday afternoon, when I happened to be outside, and they all said when we stopped them that they had no idea that it's a one-way street because there's no signage in the middle of the street. And then my next comment, it was something that was said at the infrastructure meeting yesterday, that a decision is going to be made at the January business meeting about what action will be taken at 201 Sabine, and I am wondering what action could be taken, because is there, are there going to be community meetings scheduled? Is there going to be more community input? What type of is going to be taken?
Okay, I've got all those. We will weave those in.
Now, I don't know if John Gallagher heard my comment or not, because he just came in. If you could pass that on to him.
Yeah, I wrote them all down. Yep. I will indeed. I think he heard it.
I did.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment? I don't see any other members of the public. So we will move on to Action Item 7A. Finance and Administration, Council Record.
Yep. And folks, I'm going to give the caveat, my internet is unstable, so if you leave me, Fred, if you could peek over to my chair, I'll rejoin you on the phone. I move that Borough Council appoint Matt West to the position of interim Borough Manager and Borough Secretary.
Second. Seconded by Bob. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Matt, you are unanimously approved.
Thank you all. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, and we really appreciate you stepping up to this. It's a big responsibility.
It is. Thank you. Thank you for your confidence.
7B?
I move that Borough Council appoint Michelle Carroll to the position of Open Records Officer.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah.
This makes so much organizational sense. This makes so much organizational sense to me. I never quite understood why the Borough Manager was paralyzed almost with right-to-know requests. So I don't know whose idea this was to make this shift, but I just think you exponentially made our office more efficient. Aaron, you're pointing at a Zoom. You're all pointing different directions.
Uh huh, that's, I know. That's the funny part. But for me, I'm pointing to Mr. West, because it was his idea. Matt, do you maybe want to say a word or two about it?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So this was, so Michelle has been kind of the de facto Open Records Officer up to this point anyway, and that was one of my eureka moments. I was like, why hasn't she been appointed Open Records Officer up to this point? She's doing most of the work anyway. And so we discussed it, and she's really interested in doing it, and I'm just happy that she wants to do it and continues to want to do it, and she is the right person for the job. And I just wanted to say thank you to Michelle for, you know, stepping up in this role and being recognized for that.
Thank you. All right, all in favor? Aye. Unanimous? Thank you. Counselor McGreevy. 7C.
Okay, I move that Borough Council conditionally appoint, this is a sergeant position. I'm going to go to my letter from-
Yeah.
Mike Samuelson. Bear with me a minute. Okay, this is the recommendation to counsel from Michael Samelson, the Chair of the Narberth Civil Service Commission. And so I will now fill in the blank. Officer Vernaccio as Sergeant for the Narberth Borough Police Department pursuant to the certification of the Narberth Civil Service Commission and contingent upon fulfilling the conditions and requirements of the Narberth Civil Service Rules and Regulations.
For a second. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mayor?
I can just say that Mike has served this borough for, he's the longest-serving officer currently on our force. He's served this borough well for many years, and we are very fortunate to have him in this role.
Thank you. I think Mike was before us a year ago to celebrate an anniversary, wasn't he?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None? Unanimous? Back to you, Council Record. 7D.
Sure, sure. I move that Borough Council approve the minutes of the October 21st, November 4th, and November 18th minutes of Borough Council.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? None? It's unanimous. E.
I move that Borough Council approve the schedule of bills for the general and funds authorized the Borough Manager to pay all bills.
I can second that.
Seconded. Any discussion there? Okay.
You've got the manager.
Mr. West, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Bush for winning the prize for looking over the schedule of bills today, and he was the first one to notice the whopping $600,000 transaction on the books, and I just wanted to say that that is, what you're seeing there is a movement of $600,000 from one of our general fund accounts into another general fund account. So nothing to worry about there. It's just the transfer of money from one fund, or from one account to the next.
All right, thank you. And any other thoughts or comments based on that? All right, all in favor? Aye. I just have it. This is unanimous. F.
I move that Borough Council adopt the Narberth Borough operating budget for 2021 per the attachment.
I second that.
For a second? Seconded. Any discussion on that? Sorry, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
May I-
Wait, wait, wait. Matt-
Mr. President, may I just have a word?
Please do. Sorry, I missed you.
I just, I just wished Mr. Metric was here for this, because this is his baby, and he really put a lot of time and effort into this, and I just really appreciate the time and effort he put into it, and this is one of the best borough budgets that I've seen in my tenure here, and I just wanted to make sure he gets recognized for that.
Thank you, man. And I think it's, that shows through, because there has been so little discussion either with the public or amongst ourselves, because it's very easy to understand what we're looking at and makes sense, and, you know, is fiscally responsible. So thank you. Okay, let's move to the follow-up on that, which is G.
I move that Borough Council adopt Resolution 2020-014, setting the tax rate for the general sewer and solid waste funds per the attachment.
Is there a second?
I can do it.
Okay, all, any discussion? Mona?
Yeah, I just, I want to say, now kind of following up on what Matt said too, I think part of the reason that we, it was important to me that we don't raise property taxes and raise the millage rate in a year when so many people are struggling economically, and I'm very proud of the fact that we are able to not raise taxes this year, and we're still, we still have reserves in our general fund. And again, I think a lot of that is due to Sean Metric's hard work to figure out where to cut costs. And I also do want to say, just, you know, I think in the future, Bob had mentioned earlier, increases tied with COLA, and I do think that's a responsible and proactive, forward-thinking measure to take in the future. I just, I just don't think in this year it was appropriate. So I really do appreciate that we don't have to raise the millage rate this year.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I mean, we should probably just summarize what this is going to look like for people's taxes next year, which is-
Matt?
Yes, thank you. So the, it illustrates that the millage rate is going to be the same. That's, there's not going to be any change, and that's going to be based on your assessed value. And the other, the only thing that's going to be changing are the fees for solid waste and sewage. Solid waste will be going up, and I don't have the calculated numbers of the average. It's maybe about a 10% increase in your total rate for solid waste. Conversely, for your sewage, it's actually going to go down a little bit, because it's wacky in that it's based upon total number of gallons of water used from the water company, and so that can fluctuate over, from year to year if people are using less, then the sewer rate is going to go down. So that rate isn't really a rate, it's a total number of usage divided by the total number of units. So it's not, you know, most people see just a little bump, and that's due to solid waste, and that's a contractual increase from year to year.
All in favor? Aye, passes. And I was a little distracted, but I do remember everyone, that the budget did pass unanimously. I just want to say that out loud. Now the tax rate has been passed. Let's go to H.
H, I move that Borough Council adopt 2021 meeting schedule for Borough Council and Council Committees per the attachment.
Second that.
Seconded. Any discussion there?
Do we have an actual list of all the meetings? I don't think I've seen it. If we do-
Yep.
Matt? Go ahead, Matt.
It's on there.
Yeah, so I added it late this afternoon, assumed that the council was not interested in changing the council meeting dates from the first and third Wednesdays. I illustrated that, and also illustrated, or defined that July, August, and September would only be the third Wednesday of the month. Michelle Carroll verified with the other committees that they want to continue to meet on their currently scheduled timeframe, and worked with Mr. Bush to get the Infrastructures Committee also.
Okay, thank you. And we checked for calendar collisions with government and religious holidays. Yes. Okay, great. Any other questions? All in favor of approving the meeting schedule? Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. Aye.
I move that Borough Council appoint the, oh.
This one, we, Matt, I think you have something to share to the screen, and then I think then we can make the motion and maybe see if we can't do it all in one swoop. Sorry.
Give me a minute here. One of you, there it is.
So Cindy, maybe, maybe read the motion that you were going to read. We'll put that on the table, and then we can have a quick discussion and maybe amend the language of the motion to help us through this document.
Sure. Sorry, I jumped the gun there. I move that Borough Council, I move that Borough Council appoint the following Narberth Borough residents to boards and commissions per the attachment.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second now.
Okay, thank you. So now we have, in front of us, the attachments, and we'll just sort of summarize them. We have two appointments to EAC and one applicant. We have an empty space for Human Relations Commission. We have NIDA, which has one opportunity for appointment. The Planning Commission, I'd just like to say, in speaking with council members privately, I think everyone is excited to have so many names and so many qualified names submitting their hats into the ring, and what I'm hearing from each of you is a desire to properly interview each of these candidates in a public setting. With the only exception, I think, of the known entity of Todd Bressi, who is currently the Chair of the Planning Commission. And I did receive a request from the Planning Commission that because they have work in front of them with various development projects, that they would like to keep their numbers the same, so that they sort of have an odd number of members and are able to make votes to approve projects. To that end, I have spoken to Jim Spear, whose term is expiring on December 31st, and who has not put his name in the hat for reappointment, and he has graciously agreed to be reappointed in the short term. We have to appoint him for the entire term, but he, he will take, continue in the role if we'll, if we have him in the short term, which will give us a month or two to interview these candidates, at which point Mr. Spear has graciously offered to resign, and then we could fill his spot with somebody else. Mr. Walco, does that sound kosher to you?
Yes.
Great. So that's the, so that's part of Planning Commission. Parks and Rec, there's more names than positions, so we should have a bit of a discussion here. Police Pension, two names for two slots. Shade Tree, two names for two slots. UCC vacancy. Ira, thank you for showing up to this meeting, and, because your name is on the list, and for zoning hearing, we have three names for one slot. So I'm going to suggest putting the Planning Commission conversation on hold, if everyone is okay, and I can't see all of you in screen share mode, so please unmute if you would like to say something about what I just suggested, before we move forward and assume that's okay.
You're suggesting that we have a motion to appoint Mr. Bressi and Mr. Spear, and that at later date, Mr. Spear will resign, and we will appoint one new member. But will we take a motion later and make those appointments to the Planning Commission tonight then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We'll make the appointment of Mr. Spear and Mr. Bressi as the proposal, and then then contact each of these individuals and sort of, we'll set up some interview time as part of a public session. Okay, Parks and Rec. Uh, okay, Parks and Rec, would, would anyone like to have a conversation?
So, uh, Mary Kay Hamburger and, um, uh, Jim McNulty are both current members of the board who wish to be, um, reappointed.
Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts about Mr. Zeller or do they know Mr. Zeller? I do not. Okay. Okay, um, moving down to zoning hearing board. Three names, one slot. Any thoughts?
I, I think Mr. Johnson has been the Chair of the zoning hearing board for many, many years, and he's requesting reappointment. I think, given his experience and, um, time served, that if he's interested in continuing, I think that's in our interest to, to have him continue in that role. I do know, uh, I am familiar with the qualifications of the other two members, and they'd be both great members of the zoning hearing board. And I hope we would encourage them to, uh, reapply for the next appointment. Next opening.
Okay. So, um, with hearing that, I'm going to suggest adding the following language to, to this motion, which Cindy, you could accept, uh, and Bob, as a friendly amendment. And that would be a motion to appoint board and commission members as follows. Environmental Advisory Council, uh, Miriam Shackell. In the Narberth Industrial Development Authority, Michael Staub. Planning Commission, Todd Bressi and Jim Spear. Parks and Recreation, Mary Kay Hamburger and Jim McNulty. Police Pension Fund Trustees, John Arco and Adam Kazan. Shade Tree Committee, Jim Spear and Rick Tralas. UCC Board of Appeals, Dave Brower. Vacancy Board, Ira Winston. And zoning hearing board, Mike Johnson.
Yeah, I'll say.
Yes, Fred.
Sorry, I have two, two minor points. First of all, um, so Jesse Lidle, who's currently the Chair of the EAC, has also submitted a, uh, he, he sent in the late email, uh, saying that he was, you know, willing to be reappointed. Went out to, to me and to Michelle a couple of days ago, but it's not reflected here.
So, so, so we could amend what I just said to add Jesse Lidle, whose term is expiring, to fill both slots.
Yeah, and the second one is.
Cindy? Cindy, is that all right?
Yeah, yep.
Uh, Bob, that's all right?
Second now, yeah.
Okay. All right. So that's the motion currently on the table. Go ahead, Fred.
The second point is that there are two different slots for the pension fund trustees, um, because the terms are different. So we need to slot them in a different.
So to clarify, um, why don't we just go in order, John Arco for a term expiring 12/31/2023, and Adam Kazan, uh, for a term expiring 12/31/2024. Is that okay? Cindy?
Um, yeah.
And Bob?
I was going to suggest the reverse order, so that Mr. Arco would serve the longer term.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's why I was looking at this. Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So Mr. Arco has a great deal of experience in, um, retirement administration.
That, so if we're going to agree to that, that, um, Adam Kazan will have a term expiring 12/31/2023, and John Arco, 12/31/2024. And that is what Cindy and, um, Bob are, are accepting as a friendly amendment. And so, um, would, should I read it again from, from the start, just so we're all clear? Okay, I'm going to try and get this right. So if I mess up, call me out. So the motion on the table is a motion to adopt boards and commission members as follows. Environmental Advisory Council, Miriam Shackell, for a term exp, uh, expiring 12/31/23. Jesse Lidle, for a term expiring 12/31/2023. Narberth Industrial Development Authority, Michael Staub. Planning Commission, Todd Bressi and Jim Spear. Parks and Recreation, Mary Kay Hamburger and Jim McNulty. Police Pension Fund Trustees, John Arco, for a term expiring 12/31/2024. And Adam Kazan, for a term expiring 12/31/2023. Shade Tree Commission, Jim Spear and Rick Tralas. UCC Board of Appeals, Dave Brower. Vacancy Board, Ira Winston. And zoning hearing board, Mike Johnson.
No, re, resecond those.
Okay, so, uh, any further discussion?
Nice.
All right, hearing. Yes, go ahead.
So I just have a question. Um, so I, look, this sounds good to me. I like the idea of reappointing people who have already served and have served well. I don't know, like, I see that there are some new people who have applied, and I'm just wondering, did I miss an email to read their letters of application? Because I saw an, I saw an email from Michelle with the, like, the list of applicants, but I didn't see some of the people who are on this list. Uh, Planning Commission, I saw more. But with the other new applicants, I didn't see letters from them. Did I miss that somewhere in the loop? Because I, I think it's important to also consider, I'd like to learn about people who've never applied, who are applying for new positions, because maybe they consider serving on other things. And I'd like to have information about those new people applying.
Matt, can you answer that?
Did I miss an email or did, did you guys see an email or, I don't know?
Well, I can tell you what happened for me, Mona, is that I saw that initial link that you described that you saw. And then I actually, um, I first, I looked in SharePoint to see if I could find those, the documentation and the letters. And I actually couldn't find them, so I emailed Michelle Carroll and asked her if she would send me the link. And that was the way I got the information. So, but I don't believe, I, I searched my email. It may have been sent to us, but I didn't see it either.
Yeah, I don't, I can't, I can't speak intelligently about, um, the la, the late additions. I was assuming that these were saved up on SharePoint. That was, that's what I'm trying to look at now, but I can't find that at the moment. So it's one of these processes that I'd like to get hammered down a little better on how do we communicate? And, you know, if we could, you know, really, um, stress due dates, you know, that, that helps that process also. And there's a reason, I understand that, you know, it, folks might be a little reluctant to, to sign up. But, you know, due dates do help us, especially with council having to make these decisions. And it helps, um, administration stay on top of it and forward them in a timely manner.
They are, they are on SharePoint, the late additions. I did find them. But, and just to, to, to follow up on what you said, Matt, I think what you said is very important. I think when we don't have a sufficient number of applicants to fill the open slots, then entertaining late applications makes sense, because we were going to have to set a new due date anyway, right? And keep it open. So that, that's not problematic. When, when we have sufficient number of qualified applicants and late applications come in, I think we've discussed this before, as, as bad as it makes us feel as community members, I think we've decided not to entertain those applications, simply because it puts us in the position of making a kind of a, um, an arbitrary decision about how, how late is too late. Oh, oh, well, this was just a couple of days. Let's not worry about it. But if something came in the night before a decision, we might say that's too late. And that, that, that may lead to un, disparate treatment of different late applicants that may leave sore feelings. So I would rather say, if there are sufficient number of qualified applicants, that no matter how sort of bad it feels, I think late applications need to be, you know, not entertained and thanked for their interest and, and asked to reapply at another time. That's, that's my feeling on how we should handle that.
I have previously been more flexible, but I think, um, we've had this conversation a couple of times. As, as this council has evolved, and I, uh, have come to respect that process, and I, I concur with that. It, it's, it becomes a chaos-making for the office. If it's sort of rolling admissions up to the moment of the meeting, literally people walking in. We've had people walk into the meeting and throw their name into the ring. And it gets, it's just, it's very hard to be thoughtful and make an even decision. So if everyone's okay with that.
Um, yeah, and I, I just wanted to finish by saying, I think, um, Michelle, if you could send me the link, because I'm looking for it and I don't see it. But I, I do think it is important to, I'd like to see those letters of application, because it is important to follow up with people who have interest in volunteering on our boards and commissions and talk to them when there are other openings available, you know? So, anyway. Thanks.
And Mona, I'm sorry, it says, the folder says temp, so you're not probably looking in something that's labeled that makes tremendous sense. So maybe that's one of those things that we can make it a little clearer.
Thank you.
So Matt, does the office currently contact, um, people who apply who are not selected for a board or commission, do you know?
I, I'm not sure. Um, I'd have to double check with Michelle Carroll about that. I know she's really good about communicating things. Wouldn't surprise me if she does do that.
I'd like to, um, let's make our process, which is, you know, by, by the end of the week, people who have been selected are notified and people who have not been selected are notified in the next 48 hours.
I think that's fair.
Okay. All right. So with the motion on the table, any further discussion? Good process conversation we just had. All in favor of approving these members for boards and commissions? Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to those appointed. Back to you, Counselor Rickards for 7J.
I move the Borough Council adopt the 2021 fee schedules for Narberth Borough per the attachment.
Second.
Seconded. Um, any questions, discussion?
This is basically no change from the current fee schedule, right?
All right, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Counselor McGreevy, K.
I move that Borough Council adopt Ordinance 1029, an ordinance of Narberth Borough amending Section 3B of the Borough Ordinance regarding temporary face coverings to permit face coverings to not be worn on certain borough-owned properties if a 10-foot distance can be maintained per the attachment.
Is there a second? Bob? Oh, Counselor Al Shacks, okay. And any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, great. And Mayor, you had a comment or something to say?
Just a comment. So now that that has passed, uh, just FYI, I will be updating my, um, declaration of emergency to incorporate the changes, uh, to the mask ordinance, uh, into the mayor's declaration of emergency. So that will be done and it will be posted.
Okay, great. Thank you. Infrastructure. Mr. Bush?
Uh, I move to adopt Ordinance 1030, electric vehicle charging stations.
I'll second that.
Uh, Aaron, you're muted again, sorry.
Michelle got the second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Counselor Rickards. M.
I move that Borough Council approves of planning services contract with Montgomery County Planning Commission per the attachment.
Okay, second?
Second.
Bob's got it. Um, anything we should be aware of, Mr. West?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So I added the contract this afternoon, if you've had a chance to take a look at it. It is a slight increase from the previous three-year contract. It's a $945, uh, increase over three years, about a 3% increase. If you take a look at the contract, uh, it is, um, a pretty specific contract, and there are specific goals that are listed on that. Heritage Action Plan, trans, uh, traffic study. Parking Study Task.
Parking Studies.
Boy, it's been a long couple of days. Um, Parking Study Task Force and so forth. So, um, if you look also at that contract, the, uh, the county actually pays 50% of it. And so the actual contract is $63,630, of which the borough will pay $31,815 over three years for professional planning services.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Um, Matt, can I ask you a question? Um, wait, I just lost it. Yeah. Um, C4, I think, yeah, under Complete Streets, where it says, um, MCPC will assist in coordinating with Laura Marianne. It's big, no, no, that's not what it was. Um, about the grant assistant writing for Complete Streets. Um, MCPC will assist the borough in developing policy language and problem design, roadways and streetscape, including grant writing assistance. So is, is that, and I didn't see that anywhere else in the contract. So is that just specific to Complete Streets?
Yes.
And we, have we ever utilized that service with them or is that new to this contract?
This is new to this contract.
Oh, nice. Okay.
And this is something that Sean Metric and Maggie Dobbs, um, had organized and ironed out prior to his, his leaving.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions?
So that's, uh, how many, how, sorry, this is new to me. How many hours does that represent with, um, is there a specific number of hours or is it just a, a project to accomplish with them?
There are a specific number of hours. If you read through the contract, it, um, their total number, it breaks it down by total number of planning hours and the expected timeframes and so forth. I don't have that right in front of me.
Have we ever maxed out our hours or reached a stopping point?
No.
Right.
I think we've probably exceeded the cap, but they've never charged us extra.
Just from a professional planning standpoint, this is one of the best deals in the county for, you know, to get professional planning services at this, at this rate. Um, if you hire a standalone consultant, it's going to be in excess of this contract.
And I, I mean, two, three, four times in excess of this contract, if not, if not even higher. Yeah.
Uh.
It's something to see.
I love, I love that the Complete Streets grant writing assistance is in there, because, you know, I have seen in my inbox, like, emails about grants from time to time that look like they would support that. So I think it's awesome. Maybe we'll be able to take advantage of some of those as we work toward Complete Streets. So that's wonderful. I'm glad that they, they thought to put that in there.
Great. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Forward to working with, uh, Maggie and her, her team for the next couple of years. N.
I move the Borough Council approve the change order for 201 Sabine Roofing Project and Related Settlement Agreement per the attachment.
Is there a second?
Second now.
Seconded by Bob. Um, Mr. Walco, maybe you could give us some background.
Sure. Uh, so this relates to the 201 Sabine Roofing Contract, uh, which I believe that project is now complete, if not just, uh, some, some last-minute administrative work that needs to be done on it. Throughout the course of, of that project, um, an ongoing change order needed to be implemented uh, regarding evening and work, uh, and, and weekend hours to be worked to better accommodate the tenants of 201 Sabine. There has been ongoing, uh, discussions and, uh, potential claims served against the borough regarding what the amount of that change should be. Through ongoing discussions, we have negotiated a fairly, very reasonable price for the borough for that work that has been done already. So this isn't something that needs to be done. This isn't anything extra. This is work that has already been performed on weekends, um, and evenings, uh, to the amount of $45,000. So a change order was submitted, uh, and, uh, for that and a request for payment, uh, which is what is necessary to be done under the contract with them. In order to avoid, uh, and, and have closure to that matter, just to ensure that there aren't any other outstanding claims, uh, and that this amount that we've agreed to pay is all that we are willing and agreeing to pay for any of this work or any other outstanding claims under that contract. We thought it'd be prudent to also enter into a settlement agreement in association with that change order. Whether that's necessary or not, um, I don't know, but I, I feel more comfortable with it. So the settlement agreement is for the $45,000 stating that that is all payment. And again, the change order that we're approving is for that same amount, uh, which will hopefully complete this issue moving forward with, uh, with Pinnacle in the roofing contract.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council members? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Oh.
Oh, I move that Borough Council authorize the pen, the Police Pension Board of Trustees to make the following changes to the borough's police pension plan.
Second.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Bush. Um, discussion, Mr. Reed, maybe, maybe this is a good time for you to jump in.
Hello.
Hello.
Uh, are there questions that you want to be to specifically answer? I know, I, I think this is a follow-up to a previous meeting and then some additional information that I've provided, uh, more recently.
Would you, just for the benefit of the public, um, just. Did you, just for the benefit of the public, um, just summarize the changes which, um, are on the table and then we'll see where the questions.
I think that the, the discussion was to reevaluate the plan's asset allocation and thereby choose a, you know, an appropriate discount rate for value in the plan's liabilities.
Okay.
We provided some analysis on projected contribution requirements under several scenarios, including the current assumption ranging up to seven percent and half percentage point increments.
Okay. Council members?
Yeah, could you, Mr. Reed, could you outline your assumptions and, and, I mean, I just heard your assumptions, but could you outline your recommendation to us?
Well, the recommendation right now, unless you're going to do some analysis surrounding the plan's investment allocation, so you have a mix right now of equity investments and fixed income investments, uh, and it's relatively conservative. Um, and I know the discussion has been if you are able to assume, essentially you're going to assume more risk if you, if you alter the allocation to favor more equities than fixed income. Uh, and along with that risk, when you analyze the various capital market assumptions for the underlying portfolio holdings, is you may be able to justify a higher assumed rate of return. With the way a pension plan works, you've got a pool of money to provide promised benefits to the recipients. You, that, there are inflows and outflows. The, the outflows are benefit distributions as folks retire and, and come eligible to collect pension payments, expenses to operate the plan. The inflows are contributions and investment return. Uh, so if you are earning additional investment return above what your current assumption is, then that offsets borough contribution requirements. That often come, often with that risk comes additional volatility. Uh, so all those, all those things have to be weighed when selecting an appropriate discount rate assumption. Uh, right now, the assumption is five percent. And I know that the desire has been to entertain discussions with the investment consultant and coming up with potentially a different asset allocation and, and seeing what the appropriate discount rate recommendation would be. And I think my job is to, um, to help you arrive at an appropriate decision and, and obviously you'll want me to concur with whatever we come up with. You don't want to say, okay, we're not going to change anything and we want you to use nine percent. You know, I, I can't sign my name to a report like that. That's, that's an extreme example. It's just for illustration purposes, but, um, so I think that's what's on the table. I, I know that you're ready to entertain making a decision. But I don't think it is, it's appropriate to change it without a corresponding change to the asset allocation.
Do we have to make a decision now? David, I know, I know you said, it's, so we don't have to do this at this moment. We can wait and do that analysis.
Have to, part of, part of the reason is we're coming up on twelve thirty one. So two things happen. The fiscal year closes on twelve thirty one and we do a measurement for financial statement purposes for the, for the Borough令它的auditors. And then because we will be entering an odd calendar year, uh, the state's funding requirements under Act two oh five indicate that valuations for funding requirements are done every other year in the odd year. So one one, two thousand twenty one. That doesn't mean the work is done on one one twenty one. That's the measurement date for determining this year's valuation. So we will want to know whether changes are going to be contemplated or made, uh, so that we can use a discount rate for that purpose. Because otherwise you won't capture that again until two years from, from now.
So is there a benefit to, uh, like, how does the state funding change if we were to increase or decrease the, the discount rate?
Generally speaking, if you, if you, it, picture a seesaw. So on one end of a seesaw, you have this assumed rate of return or long-term rate of return, and that's also the plan's discount rate. The plan has, uh, the, the plan is like a series, each participant acts like a bond, so that they're due coupon payments when they retire. You are determining a value of all those payments in today's dollars. So you're discounting future payment streams back to today at that quote unquote discount rate or long-term rate of return. So the other end of the seesaw is the plan's liability, which is the number that you compare to plan's assets to determine how well funded it is. If you raise the interest rate, the other end of the seesaw drops and your, your liabilities decline and your funding, your funded position improves. You know, and think about it this way, if you knew that you were going to put money into an interest-bearing account today and it was going to pay you seven percent, well, you, you knew you needed a certain amount of money a year from now and you were going to enter into an, an interest-bearing account to pay you seven percent. I could put this much money in today and in a year I'll have X plus seven percent. And that may be enough. If you're only going to earn five percent on that account, then you need to put more money in today in order to get to the same spot a year from now. It's the same concept with the pension plan. If you're going to assume investment return, then that offsets contribution dollars. Now where that.
And David.
Go ahead.
No, no, I'm sorry. Finish your thought, please.
No, I, I just said, you know, always keep in mind that typically what that means is you're going to be suspecting yourself to some volatility. You know, a conservative portfolio, uh, doesn't see the same swings as a, as a more risk on portfolio. So you just have to be prepared for that.
Thanks. So, uh, so do we need the decision about the discount rate by December thirty first?
No, I, I think documentation is important. So clearly if you don't make any changes to your plan's portfolio on twelve thirty one, when I get an asset statement, it's going to look much like it looks today. Uh, same asset allocation with a roughly, you know, thirty to seventy percent fixed income to, to equity holdings. Uh, but say we get into the first quarter and, and some decisions are made. Remember, these are long-term decisions and they're long-term assumptions. So if we know where you're headed with asset allocation, we see some capital market assumptions, we do some analysis and come up with a different discount rate, uh, I will factor that into the January first twenty one actuarial valuation. It just has to be documented and supported. That's the important part. I think the timing is less important than that, um, documentation.
So I, I'm sorry, I'm not totally clear then. Do, we need to have documented that we wish to make this change by the first?
No. I, I don't want to have a discussion about a discount rate change without seeing what the asset allocation is going to be.
Okay, so what do, let, let's say that, so, you know, we do intend to make this change. There's some question about whether we can make it tonight. So let's say that, you know, we clearly have, we, we, you know, we intend to make this change and then over the next couple of months, uh, we sort it out. Is that enough time? I mean, does that allow you to, okay?
It, it is, you know, our, our work will typically, we will typically do the, the GASB measurement first, so that will play into that. So I would say within the first couple of months, if we know where we're going to land with asset allocation, you, you need to involve uh, the investment advisor in this discussion. So that they can make an appropriate recommended asset allocation and share with you what they're going to do, what they're recommending in terms of holdings and strategy and investment policy. Uh, and then we'll come up with rationale to support a discount rate.
So how, I mean, how should we guide the investment manager here? I mean, I think clearly, I think, what I personally would recommend, I don't know where everybody else on council is, is that we be slightly more conservative than where everybody, where our peers are. I think that, you know, there's willingness to accept some risk, but not excessive risk. But right now we are, we are well below, you know, we're, we're, we're about the least risky in the state. Um, and I think there's, you know, room to be a little more aggressive. So if we give that sort of guidance to our, do, do we need to give sort of more specific guidance to our pension fund, uh, trustees?
I think the discussion will start with that, you, that we're open to, to reevaluating the portfolio holdings. Uh, we think we're in a position to maybe assume a little bit more risk than we have, have. See if they can come up with a recommendation that moves us from five percent to something else. Whether it's six, six and a half, you know, with the appropriate level of moves in that allocation and then we want to look at where we think each asset class is going to perform. And there's some published information and they may have their own. Uh, and we'll help you make a decision with where the discount rate should go from there.
So should we, should we give?
Words with allocation.
Can I ask a question? I feel like we're missed, I, I, I guess I was thinking this conversation would be more about a risk assessment. So, um, I, I feel like we're missing a big piece of the puzzle, aren't we? Shouldn't, I feel like just talking about the discount rate and talking about allocation of our investments is missing the piece of what's our, you know, have we done a liability-driven assessment of the pension? Like how much risk can we handle in this pension based on if, I know we have a small sample size, so it's hard to figure that out, but don't we need to know what might happen if all of a sudden we have two employees go out on, uh, permanent disability or something else? Cause that, isn't that a big factor that we need to talk about before we talk about allocations and discount rate? How much risk we can assume as a council? Or no? I mean, I, I thought that's what we were.
I was under the impression that this was purely driven by the desire to try to generate additional investment return and thereby support a higher discount rate. That, that, that was my instruction, kind of leaving the last meeting and the, the information for this one.
Well, I think there was some slight miscommunication about what we were expecting and who, you know, and with the, the change, uh, with Sean Metrick leaving, I think there was some conversations that were left unhad.
So let me, let me jump in here. It sounds like we, we, there's no reason that we need to make a decision tonight. It, it can sort of be post-dated, right, as necessary over the next couple of months. You're hearing from us, I think generally, that we would like to move our discount rate to be more in line with other municipalities, our size, with a correction factor of slightly more conservative than them. Is, is that what I'm hearing? Council members?
Okay, so if I can add a little bit here. So I do think after talking to the, um, trustees and others that we, we want to kind of pivot the process, uh, to say, okay, we're going to assess what our risk tolerance is in the borough. Like as a council, that's what we do. Right, Dave, we kind of, like what you're doing now, we must pass it to you to say, okay, here's our temperature on risk. You do your assessment, right? And, and, um, in conversation with us, like we're doing now, and then the, those, the investment strategies and whatnot, then gets almost kind of passed to the trustees. So there's really kind of three different distinct entities here. And I do want to point out that we have two new trustees that are being appointed. So that also may suggest perhaps we want to hold off, um, and catch both Adam and John up to speed too, so then they can give a recommendation on investment, but.
So maybe, maybe what we need is a common language to, for each council member to express their comfort with risk, right? I mean, you fill this out on a financial form, like least risky, little more risky, medium, right, five point scale. David, does that, is that the kind of thing that you're looking for? Sort of a blended score of where council members individually and combined we'd feel?
I think my understanding is we were really talking about your tolerance for investment risk. And that's the price, the discount rate, asset allocation, relying assumptions for what different areas of investments will perform. Now, a pension plan is a pool of risk, uh, or other risks, and we're taking those risks into account. You mentioned, you know, disability. Now, again, your sample size is super small. Um, so we look to history oftentimes, uh, as well as maybe a little bit of forward-looking information. Um, we are reserving some level of liability for, for somebody becoming disabled. Uh, we are reserving liability for life expectancy. Uh, the, the, the primary drivers of cost in a, in a plan like this are the discount rate and life expectancy. You're paying, you're paying lifetime pension benefits. You need to have an estimate of life expectancy in order to do that. Uh, life expectancy has been increasing. Um, generally speaking, health, health and mortality is improving. Um, and we factor that in. We factor in compensation increases. We factor in, uh, whether someone will, um, like I said, become disabled before they retire. So that level of risk that we are reserving as part of the plan's liability, there is liability, there is risk reserved for those contingencies. But the, but the main drivers of cost are, are the discount rate and life expectancy. And we're using a conservative assumption for life expectancy and comfortable where we are there. It's appropriate. Uh, and it's, it's public plan and it's public safety plan driven. Uh, so we're good there. So I think when you're analyzing risk and when I keep talking about risk to you, it's really focused on the decision that you're trying to make, which is you've looked at the discount rate, you realize that relative to peers, you're low and that's, that's apples to oranges. So we provided a list of peers and what their assumed rates of return were, but what we, what we did not have is what their asset allocations were. You may have seen some seven and a half percent, seven and a quarter percent, but they may be at seventy five, twenty five, and you may not be comfortable going that high. Now, some of them that, that are our clients are probably in a position where their discount rates may not even be supportable. Uh, but they, they don't think they can afford to change them. You know, I'm not in those rooms having those discussions with them the way that we're having ours now.
Which is a different problem than sort of us coming to you and asking you to adjust the discount rate and then not change the allocations where you would say, hey, this is against my professional best judgment.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's a long-term return assumption, uh, which means you're, you're pretty much wrong every year. Um, you're trying right on the long-term on the average.
But municipalities can find themselves in a place where they set a discount rate, they have an allocation. They are not aligned, but they just don't change it.
Right.
Okay.
They've seen an analysis to change it and say, we don't, we don't have that kind of an increase in our budget anywhere, uh, you know.
Kick the, kick the can down the road, so to speak.
Sorry, I interrupted your friend, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just to, to address your concern about risk is, as best I know how is that, you know, all of these other municipalities that we're talking about, all these other local municipalities, you know, I asked, uh, Dave to provide us with a list of small municipalities with similar sized pension funds and they, I think all of them had a, had a higher, uh, discount rate than we do. They're all facing the same problems we do and the same risk we do. They all have the chance that, you know, two or three people will suddenly, you know, something will happen. And, uh, they all have judged that risk to be acceptable. So I think there's, there's room for us to be, you know, more flexible, given, right, what our peers are doing.
I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying, Fred. Um, I am hearing that there is a difference between council members, uh, in terms of the appetite for risk. And so I'm trying to find a way that we can communicate to David what that is on an individual level and sort of as a combined group level, so that there's something actionable that Dave can go, you can go and do and come back to us. Dave, does that make sense, what I'm suggesting?
Yes, okay. And I haven't said anything, just quickly.
Please do, Michelle.
I, two, two things. I'm not sure what motion O is actually for, because it just is documented, we posted here soon. So just as a process matter, like I, following the discussion, I just don't know what this motion is intended to do, but we could deal with that later. On the risk, um, I've, I've been following the discussions and watching the F and A meetings where David, and by the way, David, thank you so much for your time and, and your, your explanations, because I am, this, this is not my wheelhouse and you make the, this topic really pretty clear, even for people like me. So I appreciate that very much. And Fred, I, I think your point to take a look at this and, uh, and, and see what the analysis shows us is a really good one, because I think the thing that's easy to lose track of is that it, it, you don't want to take excessive risks and be foolish, but if you are too conservative, right, if you're way more conservative than what's actually going to happen, you've been putting a lot of money, year by year, tax money into this fund that you could be using to serve the community in other ways. So there's, there's a sort of a hidden downside, right, of being too conservative, which is that you don't get to do things in the here and now that we need to do to, uh, to keep this borough moving in the direction that we want to keep it moving. So I want to set the risk at an appropriate level. And, um, I think that, you know, Fred, you were correct to observe, we are like the most conservative in this state. Maybe, maybe it's time to, to take a look. I mean, I'm willing to, to accept a little bit more risk, because I know that it's a balance between the future and the present. Uh, we have things we have to do in the present and we are year, year in and year out. You know, we feel, I feel a little bit strapped every year. When I, when I look at the projects that we'd like to accomplish.
So would it be helpful?
I think.
Go ahead, Fred.
I, I think this has to go to the pension fund trustee next. I think that's where our, our risk discussion goes to. They're the ones who are, you know, choosing the allocation and then the auditor is going to look at the allocation and say, well, that supports, you know, this level of return. So the auditor is going to be sort of judging the result of what the, uh, the pension fund trustees have determined, so.
So then what I'm hearing is we're not, we're not, we're, we're looking to table this motion, but send directive to the trustees.
It, it appears that we, that we have to, yeah. Um, I was hoping that we, yes, that appears to be the case. And it sounds like we have enough time to do it. So that's what I was worried about.
That's good. Yes. Okay. So can I get a Mona and then, and I'll ask for a motion to table after.
So I, while Dave is here, I really appreciate him being here and I'd love to ask some questions if I can. I've been spending, I, I don't, I know very little about pensions. I've been spending hours and hours trying to educate myself about them. So I'd like to take advantage of Dave being here hopefully. So question for you is if, coming back to this idea of our liabilities, you, I, I'm just trying to understand how this works. Like, but you do an assessment of our liabilities, which is hard with a small sample size. What number does that produce for us? What, what big data does that produce for us in terms of your, I'd be comfortable with suggesting you to be within here and within here in terms of other variables. Does that make sense? Like when you do an assessment for us, like what if we have people live longer? What if we have people go out and several people go out on disability? You, as an actuary, look at all those numbers, right? And then what, what do you suggest to us from that? I'm just trying to under, I'm sorry. I'm trying to understand this.
That's okay.
Spending hours and hours.
So a little bit of a, kind of the way that the process flows might help. Like I said, we do measurements every other year. The, the way that funding requirements work is, for example, the, the MMO, so the, the, the minimum contribution that you needed for two thousand and twenty, for example, that, that we kind of just worked through, you got your state aid and you, and you made your contributions. All that information was based on the one-one-two-thousand-nineteen measurement that we did. So the one-one-nineteen sets forth MMO, which is minimum municipal obligation, which is just contribution requirement was called required contribution. The twenty nineteen's measurement sets forth twenty and twenty-one's MMO. Twenty-one's measurement will set forth twenty-two and twenty-three's MMOs. So what that means is we're, we're capturing changes in, in, in the plans participants. So you've got active officers, you've got officers who are retired. Uh, I think there's maybe one or so who are disabled. Uh, you may have some officers that worked long enough to earn a pension at a future date and then left the force and went somewhere else. So we've got this pool of, of plan participants. We know what benefits they're owed. Those that are working, we collect compensation for them. They earn service. The Act six hundred of, of, uh, of Pennsylvania sets forth what the benefits are in the plan. To some degree, some of them are, are left to bargaining, but for the most part, it sets out a shell for you of what the benefits are. So we value all those things. And then it's very assumption driven. I, I'm very upfront about that. Where we throw a lot of darts, we try to throw them really accurately. One of those is investment returns. So you do capture, here's what we expected to do and here's what we did. Well, anything above what you expect is a gain. Anything less than what you expect is a loss. And it's the same thing on the other assumptions, dude. A plan this small, even though we are, we are contemplating some level of mortality. You'll go by years and years and years with no, no deaths. Now, we are contemplating that some portion of this population is going to die every year. When it doesn't, it's, it's a loss. When it, when one person out of twelve dies, there's a big game. That just kind of comes with having a plan of this size. So we are comparing assumptions every time we do a measurement of the plan of how did we fare in reality against our assumptions. And the good news is when you do have experience that falls outside of the assumptions, whether it's to the benefit of the plan or, or to the detriment. Act two oh five sets forth a way for you to recognize that mortgage. So let's say you, you have a million dollar asset loss in the two-year period. Well, you don't take that hit all at once in your next MMO. You don't pay that all back at once. You, you set up a mortgage under Act two oh five and you pay that off over a set period of time under the funding rules. So we take all those things into account, all those measurements, uh, comparing reality to assumptions and, and determining whether we have gains or losses and, amortizing those, like setting up a mortgage appropriately. So that's the way that the, that, you know, all, all the, all the analysis works out. So then it comes down to, you know, how, how do you select assumptions? Benefits are what they are, retirement age, you largely assume folks are going to work an entire career because that's mostly what we see on, um, for the large part. Now, with a group so small, you can have wild swings. Because if you only have a handful of active employees and one of them gets a big pay raise that you weren't expecting, it flows through, these are, these are all just extreme examples to kind of set word of magnitude with you. But, um, if you have, let's say you, if we are, we're assuming pay growth every year and for a couple of years, that does not happen. You, you fall short of what our assumption was and you have a gain in the plan because the folks technically earned less benefits than we were assuming. So that's the way all the math works and all gets put together in the pie and, and, and kind of the, the final product of that recipe is, is the report that we generate every other year for funding purposes and every end of year for, for borough's financial statement purposes.
Okay. Thank, that was really helpful. Oh, I'm hearing echoes. Anyone else? Okay. That was really helpful because I, okay. So I, I did look at the document with the MMO and I understand what that is. So I, I, okay. So you come up with the MMO and some ideas about investment returns, you know, wiggle room and the document that you prepared. And I'm glad, can I ask you two more questions? Cause I, just while you're here about, um, benefits and contributions, because I'm glad you brought up Act six hundred, because that's one of the things I came across when I was trying to educate myself. And I was wondering, and I know this is kind of off topic, but I, it's an important thing for us to think about as a council. In future, um, police contracts, how limited are we by Act, like Act six hundred in terms of, you know, the contribution rate being five percent for employees? Can we create a future tier in the contract, not for current employees, but for future employees where we create a new tier that the contributions might be higher? Or benefits might change in terms of the retirement age, the multiplier, the, um, the years of service and, uh, you know, all of those things. How much wiggle room is there within Act six hundred? And if you can't answer that right now, that's something I'd love to follow up with you on in terms of email. Um, cause I think that's.
I will.
Yeah.
I will, I will confirm. I, I think the contribution rate, it's like, it's so for active member payroll contributions, I think that's capped at five percent. Pre-two-thousand, it was higher than that. And then Act six hundred made some changes and, and I believe that's capped at five. And the way that's worked, so it, it is a level of cost sharing. Now, if an officer gets to, say they work for fifteen years and, and they go somewhere else and they clearly earned pension that they're entitled to, but they've made contributions along the way. They have a decision of whether to pull all their contributions out and get nothing else from the plan and walk away. Or who decide to vest themselves of their pension benefit, which they would receive at a future date. Uh, that's really where that comes into play. But yeah, the, the, the five percent I believe is the limit, but I can confirm that pretty easily. In terms of the other ones, I, there, there may be a little wiggle room. So in, you know, Act two oh five or Act six hundred may say you need to have twenty-five years of service and be at least fifty-five years old or fifty-two years old.
Fifty-two and a half.
Have some that go, make it up to fifty-five, uh, from fifty-two. But in all cases, you normally need to have twenty-five years to get, uh, full pension.
And.
One more question. Go ahead, Mona.
One more. Sorry. And, and again, if you can't answer this right now, I'd love to hear more about this later. I'm just, I'm, I'm also curious about all of the pros and cons of us folding our pension plan into a larger pension plan that might be managed maybe by the state or something else. Because part of the unpredictability is our small sample size. So I, that might be a different conversation for a different day, but I'm just curious what all the pros and cons would be of, of doing that. Is it too late to do that? Would it maybe still make sense? So just throwing it out there for maybe.
I've only had one client in the last fifteen years who was smaller than, than, than your plan. Kind of turned their plan over to the state. So you've got PMRS, the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System. And as I guess it's like a multiple employer plan, but you're, you're kind of a, a sliver of the overall pie. So one of the benefits, at least that, that, that I'll tell you is now you have your several million dollars of assets bundled with the other billion. Uh, so you get all kinds of access to different kinds of investments and, and, and efficiencies from a cost standpoint. But I would say you probably lose all control. If they're just going to tell you what your MMOs are, they're going to, they'll likely change assumptions as they see fit with no warning. You'll just get your MMO each year and that will be it. You know, they do all the administration for you. But I think, you know, I honestly, and I've never had a police plan because the police, it, it's, it's, it, it's, it's a bargained plan. So you have to sit down at the table every so often for contract negotiations. Uh, I have not had a client where the plan was at PMRS because, you know, I don't know how you bargain with them. I don't know who you bargain with, with them. I don't know how that would work if you have FOP in borough and then an outside entity managing a pension plan. I, I do not honestly know how that would work. And I would imagine that you would need to bargain the plan away is, is my sense.
With the FOP as part of.
I would imagine that, that would make sense to me. That it wouldn't make sense that you would just be able to turn around one day and say, you know, to FOP and their representative. So we, we don't have that plan anymore. That's, you have to talk to somebody else.
Well, we can definitely.
That's just, that's my, you know, that's my, uh, unfiltered answer.
So you work with other boroughs with small police pension plans like ours that.
Yeah, for that, I mean, that, this was a really, really tiny borough. There may have only been a couple of employees and they, they were struggling to manage the plan from an operational standpoint, day to day. They were, they were not contributing the correct MMO. It was, um, that they couldn't get out of their own way. It was, the, the, the best thing for them to do was turn that plan over or was going to be in trouble. So I, I don't see that here at all. In fact, it's quite the opposite.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Can I get a motion to table? So moved by Mona, seconded by Fred, all in favor. Aye. Okay. This is tabled. Thank you very much, uh, David. Very educational for all.
Thank you all. Happy holidays.
Thank you, David.
Happy holidays. We'll move to, uh, seven P, uh, councillor records.
I move that Borough Council appoint B Bergval and Company PC to the position of Borough Auditor for the term of one year to complete the borough's twenty twenty audit of financial statements.
Second, seconded by Michelle. Any initial comments or, or, uh, Mr. West?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so this is the, uh, borough's current auditor, uh, who's working on the two thousand and nineteen audit, which we are hoping to have wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. Um, thanks to COVID, we were on track to actually get this thing done in March and then COVID hit. So it's been a long, interesting year. This is, uh, B Bergval and Company is a change from our previous auditors of Mailie Incorporated. We had put this out to bid last year and B Bergval, uh, won that one-year bid. And, uh, they resubmitted for another one-year contract and I'm happy to report that, um, they have submitted. It's, it's an identical, uh, contract to the one for this year, with the exception that it is two hundred dollars less than last year's.
Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Mr. Manager, do you have a report?
I do. Thank you. Um, just really briefly, um, just wanted to say that, uh, it's been a week of transition, a time of transition. Uh, I just wanted to take this time to again, thank you, um, to, you give thanks to Sean Metrick for his time at the borough and just left a lot of really good processes and, um, it's going to be a big, uh, big hole to fill. I'm learning a lot of new processes that I hadn't been involved in before, but, um, it's really interesting to just watch how things are, you know, coming through the door and through my email. And, um, it's been a really good week so far. Thank you for, uh, passing the budget. It's, I, I'm really happy with this budget and I think it is a, a sound budget for twenty twenty-one. We're going to continue to monitor that and how we are tracking on a month-to-month basis. To see, I'm really interested in seeing what COVID is going to have, what effect COVID is going to have on the beginning of twenty twenty-one. So I know, um, Mr. Metrick had started looking at that month-to-month analysis of where we were trending. I'd like to continue that, um, into twenty twenty-one. Lastly, I'd just like to say, you know, as we're meeting, you know, your public works crew is out plowing and, and, um, salting the roads. And I just wanted to give a, a big shout out to them right now that they give up their evenings to do this sort of thing. I'm not going to put words in their mouths, but sometimes I see a little glimmer of light in their eyes that they live for this type of, um, you know, driving a snow, snowplow late at night. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them and thank you for their dedication to keeping our streets nice and safe. And lastly, I just wanted to wish everybody a very happy holiday season and here's to a much better twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Solicitor, do you have a report?
A report, but I would request an executive session after the meeting to discuss, uh, real estate and litigation matters, Mr. President.
Okay. And monthly reports have been filed. Any comments for the good of council?
I just want to wish everyone a, a happy holiday season and a happy new year and everyone stay safe and, safe and sound and, and have a very nice new year.
Anyone else? Mona?
And I, I'd like to, um, just also thank our volunteer fire department who's already gone out on, I don't know, it seems like maybe two calls today, including our uh, council president, Aaron Muterick, who's part of our volunteer fire department, because on days like this, when we're all trying to stay safe and warm inside, they are out in there in that snow, keeping us warm. I mean, keeping us safe. So.
Thank you. I did not make those calls today for the record, but, but I do enjoy doing it. Um, any new business? Any old business? Yes, Fred.
So I, I'd just like to clarify how we'd like to proceed with the, the police pension fund idea. It sounds like, uh, you'd suggested gathering sort of risk information from everybody and then sharing that with the pension fund trustees.
Yes. So I think we had a little miscommunication. I, I would be great if we could get the trustees to attend our next meeting, the first meeting in January. Mr. West, if that's possible.
And I, I had that thought too, and we have, we're going to have two new members. And so maybe, you know, that's going to, you know.
Yeah. You want to give them a first meeting before we put them through the fire?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Maybe, could you communicate with them and, and sort of, you can get back to me and Fred and I will coordinate, um, a timeline for them coming to our meeting. But I would ask council members on a ten-point scale, one being cash money that actually loses value against inflation. And ten being extremely risky, where, where do you think the pension fund should lie? And, um, just think about that. And, uh, at some point in the future, we're going to, going to ask each of you for that number. And I think it will be helpful for all of us to see numerically where each of us stands and then what a blended rate looks like if we were just to average each other. And obviously this is politics, we can have a conversation. There's no sort of fixed way to do it, but I think that would really help us versus talking about, talking about our comfort with risk. We could just put a number on it.
Aaron, it, it, just to, to make it a little more clear, I think for everybody, um, if you could just say where we are now, you know, on that scale.
I think we're probably at a three and a half or a four.
Okay.
I, I would, I would say we're, we're more like a one right now. I mean, if you look in terms of like our percentile in the state, we were at like the fifth percentile. So five percent out of a hundred.
Don't we need to get permission to go lower than five?
Yeah, we are at the lowest that we can be according to state law. We have to request if we want to, if we want to shove our cash under a mattress, we need to ask the state. So.
So to that point, maybe you're, you're right. Maybe we're at a one or a two is where we are right now. Okay. So guys, think about that. We'll talk about it. Uh, I'll take a motion for adjournment. We'll take a five-minute recess and then we'll join in executive session.
I'm moving adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Great. All in favor? Aye. Wrapping the last meeting of the year. Thank you all. Five minutes. We will, uh, come back at nine, uh, we'll come back at nine ten.